FEMA, including Mr. Semino's contact at FEMA that we work with on a regular basis to get clarity. So, does that mean just a simple memo from the building official? Does it mean an engineering study? What does that mean? And we, and again, I can't come back and say FEMA said this because we have no reply from them.
Okay.
To be clear, there are several layers to our involvement with FEMA. By the, it actually starts in our emergency management center in the midst of the disaster when we're out there collecting the data that needs to be submitted to them. And it really, the application for, you know, FEMA funding really starts there. And by the time it even gets to finance's office, what they're doing is just managing that money that FEMA has said that they are gonna allot for us. And so, we have to submit those receipts into them so that we can get the money back that FEMA said they would allot to a program to get back from them. So, there, there are several different levels to getting money from FEMA. The initial cost and then the recapture cost. If Tom was here, he'll tell you, we're still getting money back from IC, Rita, like those hurricanes from years ago. Submitting those receipts and going through the process to make sure that we recapture funds that FEMA had allotted for the city of Beaumont. We had to go through a hearing to make sure we qualify for FEMA money with Harvey. Those things, you know, are still ongoing five and six years later. So, there are several layers to getting money, to getting the money that FEMA has said that we qualify for back from FEMA. What we're talking about is will we, will we qualify? And what are the steps to even to qualify? I don't know that that's been something that we've had to deal with thus far, but there, there are multiple layers to that application when we're dealing with that. And so, not everybody in the process deals with, deals with those things.
Okay, and am I understanding correctly that in essence, if we voted today in favor of UPC, that would be targeting commercial work and IPC would be kept targeting residential? Is that correct?
No, sir. You can vote for both. You can vote for one. We're just presenting the side by side. Today is for both, I believe.
To clarify, you can only adopt one code.
No, for commercial and residential is what I meant by both. Sorry.
So, you're saying the city could maintain IPC for its residential code and UPC for commercial? Two codes, two different categories?
So, technically plumbing for residential falls primarily under the IRC? And then clarification is brought in with the IPC, so?
If you wanted to, I think Houston has a split system. So, if you wanted to split them, I believe you could.
So, nine times out of 10, Houston is probably gonna deal with the same type of storms and situations we deal with unless it just doesn't, it hit one and doesn't hit the other. But in the past, we've pretty much dealt with the same type of situations in the past. And so, Houston has adopted UPC only for commercial, you're saying?
That's our understanding, yes ma'am.
And not residential?
That's our understanding.
And so, if we, and Groves has adopted?
Groves has adopted the Uniform Mechanical Code.
Mechanical?
Yes, ma'am.
But not plumbing?
I believe that's correct.
Well, and see, and I'm, I'm sorry, I have to agree with, with Councilmember Turner. We delayed, we delayed this for eight weeks because we needed the research to know, to make sure that our vote, that we were voting with an educated vote. And we're almost in the same delimited day that we were eight weeks ago. And at this point, we're not, really, we're not getting the answers that, that we need.
So, is the main question here FEMA? Is this, is this?
That was the main question. That was the delay that we held it for eight weeks.
If it is quite, if FEMA is the main question, again, we reached out to FEMA on multiple fronts through multiple avenues, have not received a response. And this is just, you know, one document from a Julius Blanco PE, I think is a IATMO-referenced engineer. And this is a title from plumbing and mechanical engineer that says FEMA dislikes IATMO. Now, what does that mean? I don't know. That's why we really want that direct response from FEMA. And as of this time, we have not gotten it.
So, the International Residential Code, just to be clear, okay, is included in that first item that I talked about. The IRC, the residential plumbing and mechanical and electrical, we've got, okay, so the, we need to keep that separate, okay? As far as the Uniform Plumbing Code and the Uniform Mechanical Code is for commercial. As far as the, as far as the enforcement on, on single fam, one and two-family dwellings and townhouses, it's under the IRC, okay? So, we've got, just make sure, I just want to be clear that we know that that's separate, separate codes. That's why IRC was put in that first set instead of the, the voting separately. It's where we're trying to keep it clear, separated to clear the confusion is that, that's why we kept the voting separate and we were discussing it separately because the, the other family of I codes that we first discussed, that anyways, I believe it was item number 12?
Item number 12? The first one you?
Yes, yes. That, all of those codes we kept separate, which includes the International Residential Code. So, again, as far as the discussions with FEMA, if that's the, which I understand that that was one of the, the main topics back then, I agree, I understand that and, and, but as far as, I just wanted to be clear that y'all understand that the IRC is for the one and two-family dwelling, single-family residential and townhouses. And then, so, so we read, the, the other discussion with the Uniform Plumbing Code, International Plumbing Code, Uniform Mechanical and International Mechanical is for the enforcement for commercial construction, which would include of course multifamily, three or more on residential, as far as three or more units for apartments is, is in the, the commercial side as well. Three or more is in the IBC and in the, in those, those other set of plumbing and mechanical codes. But one and two-family dwelling and townhouses is enforced out of the IRC. And that's why we pulled it out of there and kept it in those other codes at the top because we knew that that was bottom line, that was, all of those would, would be, could go together as a family of I codes. So, just wanted to be clear on that, Mayor.
Councilmember Phil Strahan.
I'm not a plumber and I don't have no allegiance to either code. I just want what's best for Beaumont, as all the council I know does. But I've had the understanding that the, the UPC was more stringent, but yet we're saying the IPC is more prescriptive. So, can you, can you qualify that for us? I mean, I, I, is, is one more, uh, more stringent than the other or?
Yes, sir. Just to give you a few examples, the, the ones that we saw on the slide, pardon. Slide 19, if you'd like to pull it up. Some of the distinctions we saw are little things like for a shower drain. All of our plumbers are conditioned to bring inch and a half to a shower drain. In the uniform code, it has to be two inches. That's 421.3 in the IPC and 408.4 in the UPC.
But is a half an inch that big of a difference?
Well, it's different pipe. And so, again, that's a failed inspection that plumbers are gonna have to undergo. It's, to your point, I agree with you. It's, it's minor on paper, but if the whole field is conditioned doing that, then those are, that's gonna be a learning curve for the field. It's, it's not a big, we're not claiming a big dollar figure.
Okay, so, what's the learning curve? I'm just doing a half-inch larger pipe?
There's about?
For me?
There's a pile of those. So, that's one example, not an exhaustive list. There are a pile of little things where in general, the UPC is a more restrictive code.
And, and we've had plumbers to come locally here in Beaumont that say, we use this anyway. It's no big deal.
And they're still welcome to do that. That's, the beauty of this is if we adopt the IPC, they're still welcome to go above and beyond the code and do more restrictive work if they choose to do that. They won't get failed for that.
Okay, so they, they, they wouldn't be failed. The UPC code is more detailed, is what you're seeing?
No, ma'am. The IPC code is, according to our data, is more prescriptive.
More prescriptive. But then you made the comment early on that the plumbing code, the UPC plumbing code, in your opinion, was equal to the IPC plumbing code?
I don't recall saying that. I, I recall saying it is more restrictive. They're both good codebooks also, I did say that.
They're both, right.
And I, I stand by that. They're both good.
Okay, we're getting semantics, I think, are you?
No, we're not.
Well, talking about on the UPC, it's, it's, it's a more, the IPC is more detailed. The UPC is more stringent. It's a higher, it's a, it's, it's a higher standard, if I can use that word?
I don't know if detailed is the right word, but if you go to the next slide, another prime example of this is we deal with apartments a lot. The duct length currently in the IMC is allowed to be 35 feet. And so, if you're going around engineer trusses and trying to get, or excuse me, exhaust duct out of, out of all those with all the turns, each 90 is, I believe, five feet. So, you can equal 35 feet very quickly. We have HVAC technicians come across this every day and we're working with them to make sure that they stay under that 35 foot. If we were to move to 14 foot as the minimum, that would be extremely restrictive and difficult to accomplish. Additionally, in that instance, if they are to go above 35 foot, IMC has clear language with ID placards to where you can address those specific situations. So, in that instance, I suppose it is more detailed where there's no equivalent in the UMC. Additionally, battery storage is a big concern for us as well as the fire department as we move forward. The IMC offers language for ventilation for those storage units with batteries. There's no equivalent in the UMC. So, again, in that instance, I suppose it is more detailed. But I, I'm not prepared to say across the board, it's more detailed.
Well, my concern is, and residential, I, I understand the IPC and someone who's building their home. That's, I get that. But when you go to commercial and you're looking at a hospital, now suddenly I am interested in it being more stringent where you're servicing the public. And so, I understand the UPC and that application. That's why I'm trying to understand, you know, the difference between IPC, UPC, residential, commercial. As far as the learning curve, we can learn. But I'm looking at the best product for the citizens of Beaumont. And if you want to build your home according to IPC, that's your business. But if you're gonna build a hospital, for example, then perhaps the UPC is, is more applicable there because it is more stringent, a, a, a higher standard that, that perhaps we as a city need to consider. That, that's where I'm trying to get my, my mind wrapped around.
Yes, sir. And if I may clarify on that, not to go back to the FEMA topic, but we do have, and we can share this with you, as far as a quality code, I don't think because it's more restrictive, that necessarily equates to quality. Because one of the things we've seen is a laundry list of federal references to the ICC codes. And, and that's more of our staff takeaway. I know that the FEMA situation is a big deal. We agree with you there. We wanted, we were just, just as aggravated as you were. However, our takeaway was the amount of federal references to the I codes that aren't existing for the other codes. This is clearly the standard for construction in the industry. And so, I'm happy to share this with y'all if you'd like to see it.
Councilmember Turner and then Councilmember Samuel and then Councilmember Neil.
And I, I understand, we did some consulting with Houston. So, just to keep it simple, to avoid what we're saying about, we don't know, that Houston received their FEMA money when they went through any of the storms that they went through in the past, since we consulted with them. I'm sure that was somewhat of the conversation. I would hope so with us asking it upfront. So, through consultation with these Houston representatives, did they, did they receive FEMA money when they went through storms in the past? I think that's real simple, that would answer the question.
So, we're aware that FEMA did receive assistance. What we're not clear on is to what, to what extent did they have to prove up that the code was adequate in order to get that assistance? We didn't, we want to bring back a, an answer directly to council from FEMA, not from a third-party city.
So, you, so you're saying Houston did receive the FEMA funding?
FEMA did receive FEMA funding.
Houston.
Houston did receive FEMA funding. The question, the question though is, we don't know what if any hurdles did they have to jump through just to get that funding because they weren't under the ICC?
You gotta jump through hurdles when you deal with the government regardless. Hurdles are part of the government. Councilmember Samuel, then Councilmember Neil.
This is a difficult decision. I try not to make decisions based on my likes or my personal feelings. You've answered one question, FEMA is gonna be vague. They're not gonna just give you a prescriptive answer. They're not gonna tell you what they're gonna, they would do or do not because of the variables. This, pretty much, I always like to go with the local. I, I like to go with those folks that are in the field. And that's one of the things I try to do. But I'm not a mechanic, I'm not a plumber, I'm, I practice law. That tells me, I try to refer to something to make a decision. And the big decision for me is prescriptive, that's going by in the letter of the law. They're telling you what to do. And performance is what works in the field. That's when the local input is important to me. We don't necessarily have that opportunity right now to have them both. And in situations where it's like that, where it's that close. The closest thing I have to the professional is the staff. And you've given us your decision. You, you've stated what you believe is the best decision. That's based on your analytical evaluations, evaluating the facts and everything, and you brought that to us. Now, it's up to us on what we're gonna make a decision on. It's difficult, I agree. And we all have to dig within ourselves to determine what we're gonna base our decision on. It's a tough choice for me, but I've always tried to make sure we had the best professionals representing us. And this is no different. I have to listen to what staff says. I care about what the people in the field say. I care about our local contractors. So, we can kick it down the road, put it off, but it's not gonna change the facts unless there's something that we're missing. So, I just have to make a decision as to whether I'm gonna go with my personal feelings or I'm gonna defer to the professionals, those that do it every day out there in the field, or I'm gonna go with those right here that represent us every day.
Thank you. Councilmember Neil.
Thank you, Mayor. The, you know, I'm kind of in a weird, odd position. I actually own a plumbing company and a construction company and have the opportunity. We work from about Victoria, Texas, all the way down to New Orleans. And it creates, the, the international code is the standard. I think even going back to several of the pages that were put up here earlier, where I don't know if the number was 97% or 70% or whatever it was, but the majority of the region is obviously international code. And I think even from a staff standpoint and a local contractor or a local plumbing company standpoint, people that specifically work in Beaumont, Texas, all the plumbing companies do residential and commercial. You got very few that just specialize in one side or the other. And so, this is gonna create a lot of chaos in the industry here locally by having multiple different standards inside the city plus multiple different standards in the neighboring cities. And I agree, I said last time, you know, the uniform code is not a bad code. And nobody said it was today. But my two cents is the international code is, is going to be much easier for everybody to continue to follow.
Councilmember Phelps Show.
Help me again, I, reading through some, go ahead. Mike's been waiting.
No, you start, Ray.
My, my back was turned too young, I'm so sorry.
I just, I, when we were looking at the IPC, I kept seeing the word minimum. Minimum standard, minimum standard, minimum standard. And again, when I'm looking at residential, I, minimum standard's fine for me. But when it comes to commercial with buildings that the public are using, then I'm not so sure that is fine with me. Am I looking at that wrong when, when looking at the IPC and the UPC? Am I, is that, is that an unfair comparison?
Yeah, when you're looking at the, when you're look, when you're reading the code book, what they have in there, like these requirements, comparison, okay, each side, it's going, that is, the code book is the minimum standard. People can always go more, but you can never go, and it says in no case shall you go less than what this standard is in this book, okay? So, when we're looking at this flexible air connector shall be limited to the length of 14 feet. So, that's it, 14 feet. That's a minimum standard, so you can go up to 14 feet. And so, it's, both codes, both codes, that is a minimum standard. It's just their minimum standard is a little bit different, like the inch and a half and the two-inch.
And I guess the reason I ask that is because I know it's human nature when you're going to build something and you're trying to keep your profit margin as, as large as you can to go to the minimum. And so, again, residential, I, I don't, that's, you know, but again, I, I'm, I'm trying to get, I'm trying to understand the UPC and being more stringent and, and just is it better product? Is it a better product at the end of the day for our public? And then Chris, or again, back to FEMA, you know, that's a, that's a huge issue for me. And I, you, you feel like there'd be no resolution with FEMA? You feel like you'll never get a resolution to that, correct?
I don't want to say that. It's just the memo I referred to earlier was September of last year. So, it's a, it's a constantly evolving and they may come out next week with a clarification to say something else. It's just I can't, y'all, you asked staff to come back with a firm answer from FEMA and we just don't have it.
Okay, and Councilman Neil, I, I yield some of my time to you. You wanted to respond to my question?
No, I was just gonna make the comment on the commercial side. A lot of this stuff is gonna be resolved by the, by the design team, the, the engineer record. And a lot of times, you know, I mean, a nice-sized project comes into town, those guys don't try to poor boy it when they do the design.
But if you are, if I could just say real quick, if, on a small, let's say on a single-family residence, when you're looking at a, in one inch and a half versus the two-inch, but if you take that to a big project, let's say one of these big apartment projects up on 105 at Major or something, where you've got this big three, four-story apartment project, when you've got that many thousands of feet of, let's say, one inch and a half versus two-inch, then the numbers get big on these bigger projects. But if you're dealing small, it doesn't look like that much. But when you get into the big projects, then of course, you're gonna see those numbers increase as far as what it costs to build.
And just to follow up on that, the, if you go back and look at the codes that Houston and Austin and some of these other like cities, or not like Beaumont, but those like cities have adopted, they have redlined and added addendums and amendments and, I mean, quadrupled the size of the UPC code that they adopted, almost to the point that it's not the UPC code that we're reading today. And I'm a little bit concerned that by adopting what is in front of us today, this would be a more stringent code than the city of Austin has. Am I misreading that?
Yeah, there's a lot of changes that, whether it be Houston or Austin, there's a lot of changes.
And we're not, I don't see those in ours, which?
I mean, the soil is different. You're, where they're not, on the coast, there, there's a lot of differences in each code depending on which Houston is more like Beaumont. So, anyways, it's, yeah, I mean, you can go on and on and discussing that.
Councilmember Gitz.
All right, so, look, we can beat this all day long. And today, we've heard from a well-respected architect. We've heard from a well-respected engineer. We've heard from staff, all of which are recommending staying with the international code. We're also concerned about FEMA. There's an old adage that a bird in the hand is worth two in the bush. We know if we adopt the international code, we've got that bird in the hand. It's gonna be approved for reimbursement from FEMA. We don't know exactly what we're gonna have to do if we adopt the uniform code for FEMA purposes, where we think will probably be reimbursed. We just don't know what hurdles that we might have to go through. But it's definitely going to require more staff time. But you've got the one in the hand that you know that's gonna be okay. So, for me, it's, it's not that difficult of a decision. Engineers recommend the international code. Architects recommend international code. Staff recommends international code. It's an easy decision for me.
Councilmember Turner.
But with that being said, Mike, you also leaving out the fact what the local plumbers actually came up here and advocated for their live out here. And my biggest, my bigger concern is we have cities that do operate within these codes and staff went out and did some research, but they still haven't brought anything back solid from the cities that actually do operate within these codes. And I kind of think that's almost unfortunate and outright for us to make a decision today when we have cities that already operate within this. And that's the whole point of networking. When we go out of town at these conferences and things of this magnitude, we should have these relationships to where we can pick up the phone and talk to these cities that actually are operated with, under these codes. It's tough to say, well, we reached out to FEMA. I, I, but I know cities have got funding, like we don't have anything solid in front of us from those cities. And I kind of don't think it's fair and accurate to make this decision today. And we made it clear that we want to know those answers. And also, I'm real big on interpretation. Which, which one of these codes limit interpretation? Because one of the biggest complaints we do get in the city of Beaumont, to be completely transparent, is one inspector says this, and when you come, and another inspector comes out, another inspector says something completely different. So, I, I'm real big on which one is limited to interpretation.
Yeah, so that is the prescriptive versus performance conversation. The, according to the data that we collected, the IPC is, limits that significantly because it doesn't refer outside the primary text as much.
Okay, so?
Call the question?
I'm gonna close.
There's no question on the floor because we're in a work session.
I'm gonna close.
It's a work session. Thank you.
City manager.
Just a few things. It's gonna come down to your personal preference. You know, one code's not so much different than another code. The two IPC and UPC stood up there and said they're both good codes. Everybody said they're good codes. This is gonna be what you want to do. FEMA and agencies, they do things that are vague on purpose because they don't want to be put on the hook for something later. So, they write things in a vague way, for sure. They wrote in IPC, but they left it open for the codes to come in there to be considered, you know, if, if you submit it, you know? But they just put it in the hands of some lower level or some lower level bureaucrat to make a decision, a recommendation to fund them. You know, I, I don't know of anyone who hasn't been funded by FEMA when things happen. You know, it's gotta be pretty bad for you not to get funded by FEMA, for sure. But because people in the feds, they want to be accountable to people who vote for them, for sure. So, I think it's just what's, whatever your personal preference is gonna be here. And both codes are good. One, you know, you gotta think about, there's a little more interaction if you have two. That's a little more interaction. But then two is that your preference of plumbing, what you want for plumbing. So, I, I don't, I think if you could push it to step, I don't think you'll get any different answers. I think you, they'll still be vague in FEMA, whatever they recommend. And other cities, it depends, you know? Austin with the UPC, they're thinking things. Buda was on, every time Austin changed, Buda changed, but Buda didn't change this time with Austin to go to UPC. So, it depends on what you want as a council. And I wouldn't think so much, I'll try to put it so much on what other cities are doing or what FEMA's doing. It's basically what you want.
City manager, I, I think you can appreciate though, a council member who says, for example, I say, look, I like UPC for commercial, just to give a better product to our citizens. And then we have a tragedy strikes and suddenly we have exposure because FEMA decides that they're not gonna honor that. And it leaves me in a position as a council member where I failed the citizens of Beaumont by supporting something that had exposure when I knew it. And I didn't cover them. Does that, I mean, can you appreciate that? And I didn't cover them, does that, I mean, can you appreciate that?
Yeah, that, that makes sense, where, where FEMA specifically mentions IPC in their plan, but they don't, they just leave the door open for others. And if you submit something to us, we'll approve it on a case by case.
Well, and that's what the frustration for me, I wish we could table this until FEMA gets back to us, but I hear it's not going to get back. I, it's just, it's a, it's a high level of frustration.
I have a question.
Councilmember Samuel.
Is there a significant, will there be a significant difference in cost, uh, or training for, uh, city staff? If we were to go to the different code?
There will be certification and some training, but it's not gonna be anything significant. I mean, any more than that, we have to renew our certificates or do training, continuing education for existing certificates. We were, we were not gonna take that into consideration in light of the, the overall discussion on the comparison between the two codes. I mean, we do it all the time anyways, and train and certify, it's just taking time to, uh, to, uh, understand the differences. Mainly, more than the, the, the cost is just to make sure that, understand, once you bring in a code, when you have like a hundred and twenty-two different correlations with the universal plumbing code with all of the other I-codes, the more so is understanding the core, you know, the differences to, to make it to where something like that would blend with the other family of I-codes, basically, and, and, and also the uniform code. So the other part, just to answer your question though, no, it's, it's not that big, not that big a deal.
Didn't I almost say that they would provide the books and it would not be any cost?
Yes, I did say, yes, I did say they would provide, provide the books, but, but I didn't, I wouldn't, didn't mention that, it's just the...
Because like you say, you have to do continuing education regardless, correct?
Yes, that's correct, yes.
Thank you, councilmember Neal?
Just a point, you can also get all the international code online for free, um, but is there, are we under a timeline for this?
Let me, I, I think item twelve with the ones that are not, the question with the uniform versus IPC, I, I think council needs to consider that as soon as possible, cause some, some, one of the biggest thing I get feedback on is our codes are behind, and our codes are not friendly. So those codes that are not in question, I think you need to strongly consider doing those today, so we can move on with, and get up to speed with the 2021, 2020 code versus the 2015. And then you can address the other question, that's my opinion.
Yeah, I did, I did recently talk to the building official in Fort Arthur, and ISO, ISO insurance standards office just finished, uh, going through with Fort Arthur. So usually, when they're in southeast Texas and they're in Fort Arthur and areas, it's not too long to where they're gonna be here. So that's why we were hoping, you know, that we could move forward and get these adopted, so we could be prepared for when ISO approaches us. We would like to maintain our ratings, we're gonna shoot for better ratings. We do have a great rating compared to a lot of surrounding cities, but we're gonna strive to actually make Beaumont better, to get our insurance rates even lower. So, so, uh, thank you.
Thank you.
Boyd, one more question, Fort Arthur, they adopted the international too, right?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Proton.
Just like the manager was saying, it's, uh, item twelve, vote on it, it's, it's just an update. Matter of fact, I think we should vote on all of them, it's, it's, it's our personal preference. But all of this stuff on, uh, item twelve, I mean, all of those, I don't see, uh, they probably, FEMA would probably be reimbursing more according to these codes than to the plumbing code.
Well, thank you very much, Mayor Proton, I'm gonna close the workshop at this time, and I'm gonna call for the vote, thank you. May I have the reading of item number twelve, please?
Council considering ordinance adopting the 2021 international building, residential, existing building, fire, energy conservation, fuel, gas, property maintenance, swimming pool and spa, and 2020 national electrical code and 2020 ICC 600 standard for residential construction in high wind regions with local exceptions. Again, so just update these from the 2014 and 2015 versions.
Thank you, you've heard the reading of item number twelve, and I would like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Item number twelve, there's a motion and a second on the floor, is there any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the motion carries. May I have the reading of item number thirteen, please?
Yes, mayor, council considering ordinance adopting the 2021 international plumbing code, this is where you make the decision between the international plumbing code versus uniform.
Thank you, you've heard the reading of item number thirteen, may I have a motion?
I'm moved to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? No?
I'm sorry.
I think that needs to be, there was a motion and a second, and there was a, a vote, and then there was, but I don't know that everyone voted, so...
Everyone did not vote.
So we need, so we need to be, so that, so the, so the clerk needs to be clear, so the record is clear.
I'm not, I'm not sure the council understands what they're voting, at this point.
Well, it's to consider the adoption of the international plumbing code.
Overall, or just commercial or residential?
It's the...
I wanna know is it, is it commercial or residential?
It's the international plumbing code, so if you, if you adopt the international plumbing code, you adopt the international plumbing code. If that's what you wanted to do.
It's not on there.
That was not the record, that was not, that was not the motion that was made, the motion that was made was to adopt the international plumbing code. We, that, that's the motion that's on the floor.
Look at your item thirteen.
I understand that, but does that preclude from voting for the uniform code when it comes to the uniform code?
No, that's, we separated it out, so...
So, if you, if you adopt the uni, international code, you adopt the code. The motion was to adopt the international code, when you get to the, to the, the second item or item fourteen, depending on the motion that's made, like...
So my question is, if you vote to adopt item thirteen, international plumbing code?
That was the motion.
That's the motion, and you can vote to approve or not?
Correct.
If it passes, it's adopted.
Correct.
What about when it comes to the number fourteen?
I don't know, cause there's not a motion for fourteen.
Wait.
We have a motion and a second on the floor.
We're still in discussion, so, uh, Ms. Reed.
Yes, sir.
Hypothetically.
Yes, sir.
To Councilman Samuel's point, when we get to item fourteen, if there is a motion made to adopt the uniform plumbing code after having passed the international plumbing code, are, are those two items then gonna be in conflict with one another?
You have one code that's more restrictive than the other code, and I'll, I'll refer to Bo and, and Boyd for, for that.
I mean, how confusing will that be for staff and for the plumbers out there? Say, I mean, it's a free, it's a free for all.
Prevent confusion, but I guess we're, we're needing to do some clarification. So the first vote was for, included the international residential code, first of all, so the residential code is, is, was approved for number twelve. So now, with the international codes or the uniform codes, as we go down each item, that is, those are the codes that are used for commercial, okay? So we divided it up, so let's say you approve the international plumbing code, then of course, the uniform plumbing code would be denied, because you either one code or the other, we don't mix the codes together, we never have, and I don't know of any city or anywhere that has actually ever mixed two codes. They either went with one or the other, and we divided it up, so you could vote on them that way, and that we could do the presentation that way. But if we, if we confused you, I apologize.
No, you didn't confuse me, Boyd, what I, what I'm, what I'm getting confused about is the notion that we might adopt both codes. And to, to me, and you tell me if I'm wrong or crazy about this, that would be really confusing if we adopted both of them.
Well technically, you could technically adopt both codes, you could adopt the, the UPC for commercial and the MPC for, uh, you know, the other ones. But the international code, the one we did in chapter twelve was already adopted for, for residential. So you could technically have two codes, depending on how you vote on items fourteen and sixteen.
But, Boyd, okay, so the IRC is state law, it's, it's only commercial, correct?
No, the, the international, international residential code is for one and two family dwellings and townhouses only, not for commercial. That was just voted in on twelve, on item number twelve.
Mayor Proton.
If one, if thirteen is, if the international plumbing code, item thirteen is adopted, will we even vote on the next one? It's mute, mute?
I mean, it, it wouldn't be necessary, it's a posted item, so it would resolve itself essentially, so, I mean, it, it was presented to staff. It was, it was presented to staff that, or staff chose to present it that way, so that council could have the ability to vote on the items up or down. But it, and we, and we do the, I mean, we've had that happen all the time, but it's, it's not necessary, it would, it would die for lack of a...
In our presentation, I'm sorry.
Now, we're standing the question about residential versus commercial, if you, you, fourteen and fifteen is an either or, you're picking which one you want. Do you want the international plumbing code or the uniform plumbing code? So you have, you're voting on fourteen for the code you want to adopt approval, or in fifteen, so those are, that's why I say it's, it's an either or.
Well, we're on thirteen right now, though. I mean, we're jumping.
Thirteen, fourteen, it's the, getting late, the uniform plumbing code versus the international plumbing code.
And in our presentation, we said IPC or the UPC, or the, the IMC or the UMC, on that, we just separated them out. We tried to, we just wanted to prevent confusion, I apologize.
Yeah, it, what, it's which one you wanna do on thirteen, fourteen?
So...
It, it's not that complicated, you just... Well, well, other, fourteen to fifteen, that's mechanical.
To answer the question, this one, these, these codes specifically deal with commercial, so each, each one, each one that you're going for now deals with commercial. So you could, to answer your question, you could have a mixed code if you adopt one of these codes that's separate from, if you decide that you're gonna do, do the international plumbing code and adopt that one, uh, as, for a commercial, but then you wanna adopt the UPC for, uh, the, the other one, I'm confused.
Mechanical.
Mechanical code for the other code, then you could have a mixed code, you could, you could end up with a mixed code, depending on how you vote.
But we've already voted once, do we need to clarify that vote or...
Yeah, so the clerk was unclear, cause everyone did not vote on what the vote was, just so we can, if, if people are abstaining and she needs to know for the record, we just need to know how the vote, how the vote landed on thirteen.
It is...
We have a motion with councilmember Neal, and a second by councilmember Gitts.
Okay, but, and councilmember Neal, you, you're gonna vote and not abstain? You have a...
He doesn't have any, uh, financial interest.
Oh, okay.
Call the question?
There's a question on the floor, we just need to clarify.
There's a question on the floor, we need to clarify.
Can I, can I request just a hand vote then?
You, you can.
Okay.
This is not right, it's not clean, um...
Let's do a hand vote?
Okay, so we have a motion and a second.
Could somebody read, okay, go ahead.
This is the international plumbing code for commercial.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yes. We're on thirteen.
We're voted on twelve already.
Twelve is over. We let it sound, we're voting item number thirteen, all in favor, show of hands. Okay? Okay? Okay.
So the motion fails.
The, the motion fails, thank you. So, may I have the reading of item number fourteen, please?
Yes, mayor, council considering ordinance adopting the 2021 uniform plumbing code.
You've heard the reading of item number fourteen, may I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to deny.
Second.
Any discussion?
And this is uniform plumbing code for resi, for residential or commercial, correct?
Commercial.
Commercial, I just wanna make sure, I'm not finna even play about this, I wanna make sure it's commercial, all right?
All in favor? Of denial, please signify by raising your hand. The motion carries. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. The motion failed, the motion fails, thank you.
So move for approval.
Second. Item four, uh...
Any discussion?
The one they just wanted to deny.
No other discussion, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose?
Nay.
The motion carries, thank you. Two nays.
Three.
Three nays. May I have the reading of item number fifteen, please?
Let me get to the... Council considering ordinance adopting the 2021 international mechanical code.
May I have a motion, please?
Move to approve?
I have a motion and a second on the floor, any discussion? All in favor, please signify by raising your hand? No? The motion, the motion carries. May I have the reading of item number fifteen, sixteen, please? We've adopted it?
We've adopted it internationally.
So, do we need to go ahead and...
No, I don't.
You've adopted one mechanical.
So Lika, what would you?
So it's, it's unnecessary, because you adopted the previous code, um, it's, it's an either or, so that one just dies for lack of, for approval of the first.
Okay, so item number sixteen?
Okay, a public hearing.
Yes.
Conduct a public hearing to hear applicant requests for funding from the 2023 community development block grant program. Chris, do you wanna take this item?
Yes, sir, so you may recall, I believe it was last week or the week prior, we had approved the, uh, this year's CDBG home budget, uh, preliminary budget. We will bring that back to council here in the next two to three weeks for adoption of the final budget. But at this point in the, in the process, uh, we're opening, we're conducting a public hearing to take, um, presentations by the applicants to the program for public service and public facility, uh, grant applications. The final two pages in your packet are the summaries of those applications. So at this point, mayor, we just ask you to open the, um, uh, open the hearing and allow presentations by the applicants.
Thank you, the public hearing is now open, anyone that would like to speak, please come forward.
Um, I have someone, they just put CASA of Southeast Texas, 2449 Calder Avenue, Beaumont, Texas. I'd ask that they give their name when they come to the podium.
Good evening, esteemed council members. And Madam Mayor. I'm Brittany Delgarza, Resource and Development Coordinator for CASA of Southeast Texas. And the lovely lady handing out goodies for y'all is Shady Nolan Bonds, our Recruitment and Training Coordinator. CASA of Southeast Texas is an organization that focuses on making sure children are safe while being removed from their family to CPS. We stand for court-appointed special advocates. So we train and recruit volunteers to ensure that each child's needs are being met while they are in CPS care and have a case going through Jefferson County Court System. Unfortunately, we had over 379 children in 2022 that required our care. And with that, we had over, unfortunately, 82 volunteers currently. So we are expecting to serve over 350 to 500 kids in 2023. The training of these volunteers is essential. One of the most important things of our program is that they are well-prepared for what they are going into. This inquire, this requires them to have 33 hours of training. They have to visit the children wherever they are. This sometimes means that they will have to travel. And so these expenses sometimes incur, and we are in need of that kind of funding for our program. So Shady will introduce.
Hi, I'm, I'm, I'm the Training Coordinator at CASA Southeast Texas. And yes, our funding will go towards our volunteers because they do this for free. They do it out of the kindness of their heart, and we would not be able to do it without them. We have about six people who take on cases, and there's over 100 something children in care, and so that's a lot to divide up. But the funding would also be used for recruitment as well as doing mileage, as Brittany spoke about. But we wouldn't be able to do it without our volunteers. And so anything that we can do to give back to them and to get them to us is amazing. Does anybody have any questions, concerns?
Any questions? Thank you, Shady.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Katie Durio, 295 Flamingo Street, Rose City, Texas.
Hello, my name is Katie Durio, and I'm the Executive Director of Stable Spirit. We are a facility. We use horses. Basically, we do three programs, equine-assisted learning. That is a program where individuals come for skills building and our therapy. It's not riding the horse, but it's using the horse for people to learn about themselves. Then our second program is called hippotherapy. Hippo is a Greek word for horse, so it means using a horse for therapy. And we partner with a pediatric physical speech and occupational therapy company called Kids Therapy. Their children do come on Wednesdays, and they are riding the horse as part of their physical speech and occupational therapy. And then our third program is called therapeutic riding. It's where we teach those with disabilities to ride the horse. That's basically our three programs we work with. The grant that we have written is to assist more with our hippotherapy program. That, so that our students who are from the Beaumont area, about, currently using last year's statistics, we, 25% of our clients that we worked with last year were from the city of Beaumont. And many of those students are very low income. Insurance does not pay for the therapies that we do because we're not really a medical facility, so we cannot file and, and file on insurance. So as a nonprofit, we're able to do fundraising or grant writing in order to help those families be able to get the service that they're receiving from us. So in our grant, we are asking for, with the hippotherapy, for some of our Beaumont clients to be able to have their sessions paid for, up to 100 sessions. Our individuals come every week, and so it's, our numbers are lower as far as the clients that we serve because those clients come weekly, and we may have them for years at a time that they continue to come to us. But they're able to come for several sessions in doing so. And then the other part of the funding that we're asking for is actually for our farrier service, and that is the gentleman that actually trims the hooves of our horses because we have 17 horses that we maintain to do all these programs. And in order to keep a horse healthy, you have to keep their hooves healthy. And without that, we cannot do the program that we do without keeping our horses healthy. And so in that respect, basically, all of our clients benefit from that, so we would be affecting all of our clients that we work with in that program as well. So thank you for having us and allowing us to present our program to you, and I would entertain any questions if anyone has any.
Well, Ms. Durio, thank you so very much. Thank you for your patience. It's been a long meeting, but we appreciate you presenting on today.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions, friends? Yes.
I just want to say hi from one Durio to another.
I agree that when you were running for election, I had a lot of people call me, are you related to him? Do you know him? And I said, I don't know him, but who knows?
Not a lot of us.
Thank you.
Robin Pearson, 855 South 8th Street, Beaumont, Texas.
Good evening, I'm Dr. Robin Pearson. I'm the Executive Director for the Sharkey Center here in Beaumont. We have been a staple in this community for, since 1944. Next year will be our 80th birthday. I know, isn't that exciting? We will have a celebration. We serve children with special needs, birth to age 21. Our children, we have physical therapy, occupational therapy, speech therapy. We have a pool for aquatic therapy. Last summer, and we'll continue it this summer, we're doing a program for scandal paddle boarding for our kids to actually go out to a lake. They missed their 10th week because an alligator showed up, so that was the interesting thing of that adventure. Our therapies, we serve about 300 kids a week in therapy. Our struggles are low reimbursement rates for Medicaid. We also sustain about 50 kids on our waitlist, so this year we have added three therapists, physical therapy, occupational and, uh, speech therapists this year. But when you do that, you have to go through this managed care system, and you apply for every managed care under Medicaid. We pay their salaries. They cannot see one child until we go through that processing. So we pay, pay for their salary for almost a year before they can actually see children. So that is kind of a drain on our system, obviously. We take, most of our kids are on CCCS funding by the state. We get $35 less per child that we have in our program per week because the funding does not cover what we do. Most preschools run a 15 to one ratio. We only take 10 to 12 kids in a class. We have three teachers in there to meet those kids' needs. Most of the children that we serve in our preschool have been kicked out of multiple preschools due to their high needs behavior, meaning throwing chairs, biting, hitting, hitting, screaming. So we take those kids in, and we provide a safe, stable environment for them. In addition to that, and hear me loud, hear me clear, kids in Southeast Texas, we are in dire, dire need and, and help. Our kids wait two years at Texas Children's Hospital in Houston. They have to travel to Houston to get an autism diagnosis when it's suspected. Two-year wait. If they go through legacy health, there's 500 kids on their waitlist to get autism testing, 108 from Beaumont. We have now found a way through Medicaid. They've changed systems, and we can provide autism testing, but we cannot bill for it. So we've been writing grants after grant to be able to provide that. Since February, when we started and gave the information out to our pediatricians, we have scheduled 25 kids. That's $10,000. Google it, it's $1,000 to $2,000 to get a kid tested. That's not what we're asking for because we're pouring all of our time and our money, any money that we make into our kids, into autism testing. But what we need is our building. We've been in it since 1965. It's a long time, starting to crumble a little bit. However, any hurricane, that's the place to be. It is built like a fortress. However, it is, does need a lot of the little TLC here and there. We put in three new air conditioners last year. The, the, this same grant helped us repair our aging system, our HVAC system, but there's always something. Our sprinkler heads are now over 50 years old, and we have to replace every sprinkler head in the building. It's a lot. So that's what we're asking for. In addition to, a canopy out the front of our building is rusting because it says awning, which we had an awning last year, but it's a different awning. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
I appreciate your energy after this long meeting.
Well, you know, I've got cartwheels and all kinds of tricks out here. I work with kids, you gotta be excited. I needed to know you're a long time.
Let me see your shoes. Oh, wow!
Wow. That's a first.
Have you ever had a round of applause like that before?
Well, thank you so very much. We appreciate your patience. It has been a long meeting. We're almost at seven o'clock, but.
I know, I know.
Thank you, thank you for your energy. Thank you for waking us up.
You're welcome, you're welcome. If you ever want to come visit, just give me a call.
Well, I'm quite familiar with the Sharkey Center. Know so many people that work there. Do wonderful, wonderful, amazing work.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Guys, have a great night.
Bye-bye.
Seth Wells, 6890 Glen Meadow Drive, Beaumont, Texas.
This can't move.
Okay, Seth, that's a hard act to follow.
Yes, ma'am. I almost wore my sparkly shoes. So, uh, my name is Seth Wells. I'm the Executive Director of the RISE Center for Independent Living. We're a non-residential center for persons with disabilities, and we focus on maintaining their accessibility, inclusion, and acceptability in their communities and to keep them in their homes as long as they see fit. People with disabilities have the right and the ability to make choices affecting their lives, the right to take risks, the right to fail, and the right to succeed. The RISE Center promotes the full inclusion, equal opportunity, and participation of persons with disabilities in every aspect of community life. One of the most significant barriers to living independently is the availability of affordable, reliable, and accessible transportation and transportation services. In 2020, with additional federal grant funds, RISE was able to start a transportation program in partnership with Nutrition and Services for Seniors, along with others, to provide rides for individuals with disabilities and seniors residing in Hardin, Jefferson, and Orange Counties. Through this community-based transportation partnership, RISE has assisted seniors and persons with disabilities secure over 4,000 individual rides and counting throughout Hardin, Jefferson, and Orange Counties. This request will assist RISE in providing safe, accessible transportation services for dozens of consumers receiving life-sustaining services such as dialysis, wound care, cancer blow-up appointments, regular doctor's appointments, and other medical services to sustain or improve their independent living status in the city of Beaumont. A majority of our consumers are low to moderate income. With these funds, RISE will be able to provide up to an additional 14 round-trip rides to our consumers every month over the next year. And we sincerely appreciate this opportunity to work to address this serious issue within our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, you gotta do a cartwheel.
I'm gonna do a backflip out of here if that's okay. Thank you.
Thank you for your patience.
Daniel Jeans, 2509 Cable Avenue, Beaumont, Texas.
Madam Mayor, Council. Daniel Jeans, Director of the HOW Center on Cable Avenue. We're asking for a generator to go to back up all of our pantries and our laundry mat across the street from the new facility that we had voted on earlier. Really appreciate the support from the city of Beaumont through the 30-plus years we've been on the corner right there. You know, I go all over the country. People ask me to come and speak in recovery meetings. I'm proud to be able to tell them I'm the Director of the House Center in Beaumont, Texas, that people know where we're at, they know what we stand for, honesty, open-minded, and willingness. 30 years ago, we're just a place for guys looking for a safe, structured environment to get off the streets and get their life started again. We give a hand up, not a handout. We teach them self-worth and value, giving back to the community. We're really involved in the community service. The convention that was over here, recognizing ladies in uniform, we were part of that, very proud of it, a couple of things, packing lunches for Ghana. But we've progressed now, 30-plus years later, to where we're an outreach for anybody in need, unbiased, if they need help, it don't matter who you are, they can give us a call. We might not have the answer, but we might just know somebody that does have the answer, and we can point them in that direction, and the phone's answered 24 hours a day.
Thank you. Any questions?
Y'all do have security, huh?
And a, and live-in house manager and a, a licensed food manager that is our cook that lives there as well, along with the camera system, so we do have security. And curfews.
Yes, you're allowed to answer all of that now.
That's okay. Well, everybody, just to let everybody know, everybody that comes there, we do a thorough background check on everybody because we do respect our neighbors, and we do take care of the kids in the neighborhood. We fix up bicycles, we fix up their bicycles. We teach them the importance of, we buy them a chain for their bicycle so they can lock it up and teach them the importance of self-worth and value of keeping that because it beats walking, especially in the summertime. So thanks for having us. Thanks for all you do.
Thank you. Thank you for your patience.
Vivian Baloo, 3030 Plaza Circle, Port Arthur, Texas.
Good evening.
Good evening.
No cartwheels. My drill team days are over. I'm Vivian Baloo. I'm the Director of Legacy CDC. We're a nonprofit organization that is HUD certified, and we're also serving as the city's CHODO, which is Community Housing Development Organization. We are a one-stop shop. We provide all housing needs from homelessness to post-purchase counseling. Tonight, we are requesting $20,000 to continue our program here in Beaumont. Through our program, it is a HUD-required program for people to tap into the city's down payment assistance, and what they do is they learn the basics of credit, budgeting, financial education, and also the steps to homeownership. Each one of our clients receives monthly counseling until their credit score is high enough to obtain a mortgage, and then at that point, we work with them to either purchase a home or build a home here in Beaumont. So these funds will be used to pay for a portion of the salary of a HUD-certified counselor and also to help with the tuition to participate in the online, online certification program. We'd just like to thank you for your past support and hope to continue this program. Our goal is to help people achieve the American dream and also to build generational wealth. So that's the basic of what we do here in Beaumont.
Thank you. Any questions? And no comments from Councilmember Turner. Thank you for your patience.
Yes, thank you.
Reese Goodman, 350 Pine Street, number 500, Beaumont, Texas.
Good evening. I am Reese Goodman. I'm the Executive Director of Communities and Schools of Southeast Texas. I have with me tonight our program director, Jennifer Stubbs, and Dr. Angelica Avery. She is our contracted partner and providing consulting for our mental health, professional mental health services that we provide in the school. Communities and Schools, we're our own individual nonprofit here in Southeast Texas. We are, our mission is to surround students with a community of support, empowering them to stay in school and achieve in life. We're a little bit different than a lot of the nonprofits. We are embedded into the school systems. So we partner with our school districts to provide, to provide integrated student support to students that have barriers to their success. We serve on 54 campuses here in Southeast Texas in seven school districts. So on all of those campuses, we have full-time staff that is, that are working with our students to help them overcome those barriers. The barriers, uh, the barriers are significant. They can be minimal, they can be significant, but we face issues for academic support, supportive guidance, health and human services, college and career readiness. We work with our administrative team on the campuses. We can't do it by ourselves. So we work with them to help our students become successful. What we were able to do recently in our last few years, 2017, we also now provide professional mental health services in our schools. These services are accessible on campus during the day at no cost to the students and families. So our students now receive therapy sessions as needed in the school setting. I know I have, only have three minutes, and I can go on and on, but that's an overview of communities and schools and what we do and how we partner with our school districts. But what we're seeking here for your help is to help continue implementing TBRI, trust-based relational intervention on campuses, and also now create reset stations for our students on the campuses within Beaumont independent, um, school, school systems. So I'll allow the professional, when it comes to mental health, to tell you a little bit about TBRI and the reset stations that we're looking to implement.
So many of the students that are served by CIS have experienced adverse childhood experiences, and those experiences can range from exposure to trauma in their households. It could be at the community level because of economic disadvantages or other barriers in the community. in the community to their success, or the community, such as the pandemic, which exacerbated a lot of the stressors that children already face. And when they show up to school, we find a lot of students who have some underlying issues that are identified as behavior issues, or they're mislabeled because it's behaviors that have interfered with their learning. And so...
Go ahead, finish.
Okay. So, with CIS, we've implemented what's called Trust-Based Relational Intervention as a universal trauma precaution to use with all of our students in order to help them learn better skills for coping, regulating, and then being able to be more engaged and attached to the school environment. And so, we are seeking support to have these reset stations on campus where students can come when they're dysregulated, and then can initiate self-regulated learning and self-regulation, where they're then adopting these healthy lifestyle behaviors that really can change their trajectory for learning and for their long-term development. And so, our mental health professionals on campus, as well as our CIS site coordinators, will have an opportunity to help these students learn better strategies for coping with stressors that are in their daily lives. And adverse childhood experiences have an impact on the bio-cycle social development of a young person. And we are hoping to not only change the, their, the impact of their learning, but also how trauma and exposure to stressors impacts their brain, their body, their beliefs about people wanting to help them, and their, their whole outlook on themselves and their futures. And so, we hope that with these stations being readily available for students, that we're helping them to change their lifestyle responses to stressors, and to be able to navigate stressors in a more healthy and socially acceptable ways.
Thank you. Do anyone have any comments? Thank you so much, and we appreciate your patience.
Sure, thank you.
Deborah, and I think the last name is Tomar, I'm not sure, 3550 Bannon Street, Beaumont, Texas.
Hi, good evening.
Hi Deborah.
Hi, Mayor, Councilmembers. Thank you so much for this opportunity. I'm here to talk about Family Services of Southeast Texas, specifically our shelter program. We have a 65-bed shelter here in Beaumont, and we are the only one here that does what we do. The nearest one is our Jasper Shelter, which has a 20 beds. And our next one is Houston, Texas. So, what we're asking for is, we're asking for funds to help us for our utility costs of the shelter. Utilities include electricity, water, sewer. Since we have experienced an increase in domestic violence and sexual assault expenses for operating the shelter have increased, however, federal and state grants have stayed the same. So, just to put it in perspective, a couple, like probably yesterday or the day before, we have about 67 women and children in our shelter. Last year, we serve about 1,200 women and children. So, we do have an increase, and there's about 3,400-plus incidents of domestic violence just in Beaumont. And in 2021, we have eight fatalities. And I think that's too many for this type of city. Do you have any questions?
Any questions? Thank you, Deborah. Thank you for your patience. Thank you for the work that you do.
Thank you so much.
Jonathan Williams, 4208 North Major Drive, Beaumont, Texas. And I think he may have left.
He had to leave.
Sheila Eldridge, 2270 Somerset Street, Beaumont, Texas. I think she left as well. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
What's?
Oh. You're for public comment. This is...
Yeah, you're fine.
That's okay. Okay, so, that concludes our regular agenda at 7:06.
You gotta close the public hearing, Mayor.
I'm gonna close the public hearing. And thank each and every one of you for coming out. We appreciate you coming. Where am I? I'm lost. Now's the time for public comment. If you haven't already done so, please fill out the green slip to the back of the room. Turn it to the, into the clerk to the front of the room, and she'll call your name when it's time to speak.
Dylan Richardson, 4575 North Major Drive, Beaumont, Texas.
Good evening. At the outset, I can't help but feel sad in that it appears many of my fellow citizens, just really in review of previous council meetings, they've gathered the courage to confront you all, and I don't think they're taken as seriously as they may like. Due to this, I will be taking a different and much more direct approach. To begin, my name is Dylan Richardson. I'm a 21-year-old college student. For those of you with a learned knowledge of the faith, I ask you to recall the words of Paul in the fourth chapter and 12th verse of the Book of First Timothy. For those of you not familiar, I ask that you put aside any preconceived notions you may have about my youthfulness, and listens to my point, listen to my points without bias. Growing up as a child in Beaumont, Texas, I was always in awe of the elected officials, along with their stellar reputations, educated opinions, and respective professions. While much has changed, my respect for most of you has not wavered. Councilman Taylor Neill, the Executive Vice President of Construction Company that has been near and dear to the heart of Beaumont for over 91 years. Councilman Mike Gutz, who's an attorney. Councilman Auden Samuel, also an attorney. Councilman A.J. Turner, entrepreneur. Councilman Randy Feldschaw, minister and preacher. Councilman Charles Durio, fire captain and first responder. And Madam Mayor Mouton, AT&amp;T Customer Service Representative. Some of what has personally changed for myself in my views is that I have lost my naive and call-o nature. I have learned some things, and three of which I'd like to address briefly. First, homelessness. I have fed the homeless population, local to Beaumont, Texas, for a little over seven years now. It saddens me to say that I have fed the same homeless people for the last seven years. Council, you have shown a blatant disregard and disinterest in providing these citizens with the resources needed to become more productive citizens of our local society. It appears that the stance of not doing anything, therefore nothing can be done wrong, has been taken by much of the council and the homeless coalition. Secondly, Beaumont Fire and Emergency Services, on an extremely rare occasion, is choosing not to endorse the incumbent office of mayor. In fact, they have chosen to only endorse two respective individuals. It is devastating and humiliating to know that our first responders are afraid of what will come, of what will come about their respective professions if some of the incumbents are to be re-elected. I implore each of you to reach out to the firemen directly, as opposed to the bigwigs at the certain professions that will say whatever is needed to save face. I am currently a student at OSEO and have not been visited by Beaumont EMS. There is a pay discrepancy of $6 an hour between private contracted emergency services and the city. If you equate that over a monthly period, the 3,000 signing bonus that City Manager Williams has put into place would be negated. I think, you know, I don't, I know I don't have much time left, and I really want to speak about the problems. I'd love to speak more about the solutions, but three minutes is not enough time. Thirdly, and finally, term limits. As I understand it, only one of you has spoken in support of term limits, which begs the question of why? I do not believe...
Sir, your time is up.
I'm not allowed to finish?
No, sir, your three minutes are up.
Yes ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Y'all, good day.
Thank you.
Johnny Beatty, 3555 Washington Boulevard, Beaumont, Texas.
Madam Mayor, Council, Mr. Williams, Mr. Boone, Ms. Reed, good evening. Mr. Manager, bienvenidos a la ciudad de Beaumont. Welcome to Beaumont. I'm here today to request that you reinstate the rental rehab program to the Community Development Block Grant annual budget. According to HUD's Code of Federal Regulations, 24 CFR Part 511, the primary objective of the rental rehab program is to increase the supply of safe, decent, and affordable housing for lower-income households through the renovation of existing rental housing stock. City of Beaumont became an entitlement city in 1976. The rental rehab program was initiated, was initiated in the, in the mid-1980s. As I recall, the rental rehab program, initially funded at about $350,000, $400,000, was designed to grant landlords with 49% of the total cost of the project, provided the landlord contributed 51%, and the project was located in low-to-moderate-income census tracts. The said rehab program was suspended in the late 1990s because of federal budget cuts to the discretionary funds and the acquisition of the Section 108 Loan Program. In regards to the said loan program, HUD gives cities the opportunity to borrow five times their annual entitlement. Thus, the city borrowed $11 million and made an $800,000-year payment from its annual entitlement for 20 years. Now that the loan has been repaid, the annual budget has increased by $800,000 a year, and some of the funds can be used for housing initiatives that would enhance the lives of low-to-moderate-income citizens. One of the highlights of my 31-year career in community development came when Mr. Boone asked me to manage the expenditures of several stimulus grants during the Obama administration. Of course, I said yes because there was an incentive that went along with it. Along with our annual entitlements, we had approximately $30 million. I had a diverse staff of 10 women, and we prayed at our staff meetings, and we went about the business of expending those said grant funds in a timely manner. I also had a female accountant, and she made sure that the monthly expenditures were spent on time. I said all that to say that I am familiar with block grant programs and the ones that will work. Also, during my tenure, we received best practices awards from the federal government.
I'm sorry, Mr. Beatty.
Thank you kindly.
We have your information.
Okay, appreciate it.
We'll read through it, thank you.
All right.
Jeff Neesum, 214 Bayou Drive, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon. Jeff Neesum, President of the Beaumont Professional Firefighters. I'd like to provide some clarification on a few issues affecting firefighters, EMTs, and the citizens of Beaumont. First and foremost, the firefighters and medics within our membership do an incredible job every day caring for our citizens. This cannot be disputed. Over the past two years, we've tried to provide relief through more hiring options. We provide our management with common sense solutions to hiring issues affecting our department. The solutions brought to the table are tried and true with departments that think outside the box. To be clear, we don't want to work to lower the standards or reduce care for our citizens. We never have. As a part of our hiring proposal in 2021, we suggested that all future firefighters be required to obtain a paramedic certification. This would greatly increase our standard of care over time. We embrace the change of fire-based EMS. Hiring the way we proposed will attract applicants from within our community, which keeps our citizens local, and also maintains an organization that is representative of the community that we serve. However, we have seen lowering in our standards. City Ordinance Article 10 dot 07 Licensed Personnel states, "Every ambulance with, when in service, shall be manned with at least two EMTs who are currently certified." Recently, department policy was changed to allow emergency care attendants to staff an ambulance. This directly lowers our standard of care and is a violation of city ordinance, as if not having enough ambulances to transport isn't enough. The response to no missed calls is a game of semantics. We do receive 911 calls that we can't send an ambulance to. In many of these cases, patients have to resort to being transported by private or other means. This prevents us from being able to provide the continuous care to the hospital our citizens deserve. There's been times where police officers transport patients in police cars. And just yesterday, in North Beaumont, a fall with injury occurred. The firefighters arrived, and we were level zero with three calls holding. The firefighters notified the family of the victim that there were no ambulances available. The family then transported the patient to the hospital. This ended up being a possible head injury with altered mental status, a true emergency. All our members want is to provide good patient care. It's easy to do when we have the resources. We need more firefighters. We're hopeful the near future will hold more focus on hiring and retention so that we can reach this goal. The firefighters of this city are asking for help and are ready and willing to sit down and work towards solutions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Charlie Crabbe, 928 East Drive, Beaumont, Texas.
Okay, thanks everyone for waiting.
No, thank you for waiting.
Mayor, well, you're welcome. This has been a new experience for me. And I want to thank Ms. Bruce Ard and her staff for giving me information that I requested on city information, and also guide me through the website to retrieve other information. Y'all have a nice, long budget, over, what, over 180 pages. Anyway, the EMS system seems to be working well, and, and I, it was interesting to hear the report about the SAM system in San Antonio that eliminates a lot of 911 calls that aren't necessary, and they put, put them off to another operator where 911 can be operated successfully. And let's see, I had a few other things, but I will come back next week and give you a longer talk. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Mr. Crabbe.
Joshua, and I think that's Hollow, 10809 Elizabeth Lane, La Porte, Texas.
Mayor, Council, thank you guys for having me. I just wanted to offer a little bit of clarity when it came to the confusion with the FEMA thing. So, I reached out to Moises Dugan's office. He's the District 6 FEMA Deputy Administrator. I did receive a response from his office. As it pertains to the UPC IPC requirement, FEMA offers relief for residential. They don't offer for businesses and/or rental properties. So, those get pushed over to the SBA. And so, there's only one option for residential codes, and that's the IRC. And so, there's some confusion, and maybe it's a typo, we'll call it, in calling it the IPC versus what it should be as written for the IRC. And so, I just wanted to kind of give you guys that. The reason that you won't get a response for is the UPC clear, that goes to the SBA. Because the IRC is the Texas standard for residential. Okay? And then, the only other thing, I'm, we're, my business is out of Pasadena. I'm a fourth-generation plumber, master plumber. We've been in business since 1956, and this is one of our strategic placements for our new business. We do some work for Coca-Cola and a lot of the industrial plants. And so, I've been kind of involved in this whole process, and specifically in Beaumont, because this is where we want to headquarter one of our new locations. And I just want to say, you guys are amazing. To sit here all day and stay as classy as you have and not get worked up, I appreciate it. And one other thing I will mention, though, I do a lot of work in IPC-focused cities, and a lot of work in the city of Houston and Pasadena that are UPC. I don't care which code it is. We build to a certain standard within our business, and we're in good shape. But I will say that having, as I understand it, adopted the UPC and adopted the IMC, it would actually be cheaper if you had the UPC and the UMC, because now you have to get the fuel/gas code too. So, for what it's worth, I appreciate you guys' time, and look forward to visiting with you guys future.
Well, thank you for your patience, and thank you for that information.
Appreciate it.
And welcome to Beaumont. We're waiting on you to come and set your business up.
Mark Roberts, 140 Bigna Road, is that Mandeville, Louisiana?
Mayor, City Council, I'll be fast, and I know you're ready to get out of here. I, I just wanted to thank you for the current, the continued update for the international codes. I just wanted to let you know that we're stand-ready to assist staff with any difficulties that they have. that they have implementing the new codes. Be glad to assist them. Just wanted to tell you thank you.
Thank you. Safe travels home.
Stacy Lewis, Jr., 1775 Rivercrest Street, Beaumont, Texas.
Madam Mayor, City Council, staff, hey, I know it's been a long meeting. I just got off of work, so I'm happy to be here with you guys, and I appreciate everything you're doing. So, I'm here to petition that the new basketball court for the Sterling Pruitt Activity Center to be named after Alexis Morris. If you don't know anything about the Sterling Pruitt Activity Center, there are a few constants. In the 90s, all the way to the 2010s, you see Coach Stacy there. He ran the whole building. He handled all the affairs, both good and bad. There were also some guys at Domino's tables calling for 15. Ms. Tony, she always led aerobics. And on a basketball court, scrubs on the left and a real hoop was always on the right. So, the two constants on the basketball court, you always see former city employee Lexi Moss and always Alexis Morris. Those two are always calling people out for a game of one-on-one. And Moss, he went on to glory a few years ago. But Lexi, better as she known, she epitomizes the spirit of those who hoop and utilize the Sterling Pruitt Activity Center, aka the RIT. Then and now, she is the most decorated woman basketball player in the city's history and the most decorated female athlete since one Babe Dickerson Harris. She's a graduate from Legacy Christian Academy. Her accomplishments include, 2017 TAPS 3A champion, 2016 TAPS 3A champion state finalist, Jordan Brand classic, Nate Smith McDonald's All-American. She was a 2018 Big 12 All-Freshman Team. She was a part of the Big 12 Conference Championship with Texas A&amp;M. Texas, she was also a first-team All-SEC Team, Team Player, and an All-Finals Team here in 2023. And then, most notably, she brought at home 21 points, nine assists, representing Beaumont, Texas, being the first for the LSU Tigers to win a championship. She's also declared for the draft today, and she's expected to be a first-round draft pick. We expect her to be in the top 15. Lexi has done some incredible things with the resources that this council and past councils have done for the North End. And I lean on you and the initiative that we declared today, that the North End community gets one of their own to have a basketball gymnasium and a court named after Alexis Morris. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. I did try to make contact with her, but of course, she's busy interviewing with much more important people. But, I did talk to her mom on yesterday, and they were really, really excited about the draft tonight.
Monday, it's gonna be Monday.
Oh, I think the announcement is gonna be, well, we've already announced it. Thank you, Stacy.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. We're gonna run through this real, real fast. Councilmember Neal, Councilmember Samuel, Councilmember Feldschah.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Turner.
Congrats, Lex. We love you, and we appreciate you. We all proud of you.
Councilmember Getz?
No comment.
Mayor Pro Tim, Durio.
No comment.
And City Manager?
Just a quick nod from Exon today and congratulate them on the completion of their $2 billion plan expansion and their activity today.
Thank you. City Attorney?
So, briefly, Council has requested, Councilman Turner has requested that we do a charter change, and he actually wanted it for the May election. However, we didn't make that cutoff because it hadn't been two years from a previous charter change. So, we are gonna be bringing to Council plans for a charter change committee, and asking you to vote on some objectives for that committee so that we can be prepared to put that on the November ballot. There would be some changes into the process of how we previously done it. We're gonna ask for Council to actually appoint a charter change committee specifically for this project so that we can ensure the items that we push forward are approved.
Thank you.
Mayor, could I have another shot? I forgot. We, we, we've gotten a request for a possible parade for basketball celebration between the high school and Alexis Morris and her team members. So, I have a meeting to talk about it with staff in the morning, if that's, we've gotten that request. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Mr. Boone, Mr. Ellis, Mr. Barkoviac, and Ms. Bruce Ard. Okay, so, I would just like to say on, yesterday, Mr. Williams, myself, and our chamber president, Steve Alanius, we testified and spoke to the Ways and Means Committee. Representative Manuel presented House Bill 3250, which will play a critical role in our economic development strategy by allowing us to leverage revenues for 10-year, for a 10-year period for our community without levying new taxes on our sales tax and our hot tax, which is our hotel occupancy taxes, which will give that revenue back to the citizens of Beaumont for the next 10 years for renovations that we're looking forward to doing in the near, near future. And so, you, you never know how long you're gonna be sitting there waiting to testify. And this came about late Friday afternoon. Got a phone call saying, can you be to Austin on Monday? And I think my eyes almost popped out of my head, but I made it, and it was well worth it. And we were able to present that with our new state rep, Christian Manuel, that presented that bill. And so, we're looking forward to getting the results back from that. And also, congratulations to our very own Alexis Morris. Can't wait to meet her. Don't know her, but her mom was very, very excited, and she says she's so busy. She just wanted to make sure that she was available to get here for the planned parade, and hopefully, we can get that in before she gets drafted and goes off to her professional life. And so, thank each and every one of you for coming. We will now recess into executive session, and thank you so very much, and go out and spread the love. We appreciate you coming.